It's ready, Jerry?
Okay, thank you. It is 9:00 AM. I will call this meeting of the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners to order. We will be abiding by the Open Meeting Act as amended, a copy of which is the entrance to this room. At 9:15, we will also be meeting as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization, again abiding by the Open Meeting Act as amended. First item on our agenda is open with prayer, and Commissioner Brunns, would you lead us?
Sure, join me if you would, please. Father Lord, we come to you with Thanksgiving in our hearts. We thank you for the many blessings that you bestow upon this entire region. We thank you for the rain that we've received as of late. We pray that it continues. Lord, we ask that you just bless this meeting, bless the minds as we deliberate. Let us do work that is pleasing in your eye and in the best interests of those that we serve. Father God, we ask for your continued protection over our individuals that work hard every day to ensure that our communities are safe from our first responders, emergency personnel. And Lord, we also ask for your continued protection for our military personnel, both here and abroad. We pray all these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Next item is to approve the minutes regarding Lincoln County Board of Commissioners meeting held on May 1st, 2023. A kid says there's probably only a couple that's gonna make it. We ought to make her a shot. I make a motion, we approve the minutes of the meeting on May 1st, 2023.
I would second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hughley?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Luler?
Upstain.
Brunns?
Upstain.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Next item is to consider the following. First, claims and treasure receipts.
Chairman, I would move to approve the claims and treasure receipts presented.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Williams?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye.
Luler?
Aye.
Brunns?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Next item is to authorize the chairman to sign the NACO VSP Vision Insurance Plan renewal. And can you tell me about that, Becky?
They added a very couple nice new enhancements to our plan. It did go up a couple dollars. Employee only was about a little over a dollar. Family went up a couple bucks, but I think for the enhancements, it'll probably be well worth it with the anti-reflective coating, if nothing else. So this was coming with a four-year rate guarantee, so.
Oh, wow. That's good.
That is great.
So, VSP.
And when do we sign up for this, the individual employees?
Yeah, we'll do open enrollment. We'll be back to our old way, do open enrollment. So they can sign up through the middle of June.
Now through?
It'll be effective July 1st. So we will be having employee meetings in May, so they will touch on this with all the employees then, too.
Sounds like a good deal. Thank you for...
VSP is a great plan.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion authorizing our chairman to sign the NACO VSP Vision Insurance Plan renewal.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Luler?
Aye.
Brunns?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
My partner's down there at the bottom, correct?
Yes.
Okay, next item is to receive an order filed fee reports submitted by the Register of Deeds, county clerk, clerk of the district court, and county sheriff.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we receive an order filed, the fee report submitted by the Register of Deeds in the amount of $17,859.75, the county clerk in the amount of $749, the clerk of the district court in the amount of $10,768.33, and the county sheriff in the amount of $5,039.27.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Brunns?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye.
Luler?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
I am not meant to sign anything today.
Is that happening last time?
Yes, I did. I mean to. Try out that.
Here, try this one.
You got one? Might be in your drawer for a reason.
What'd you think? You end up on the other side?
Yeah, might be a dead one.
I know that'll work.
I'm not meant to sign anything today.
Last week she's out of town. This week she can't run her pen.
She can run the grader, hopper, motor, but she can't run any of that. Well, I guess.
I think the grader ran me, but I did run the loader. Yeah, I think that one's out. You can have yours.
That might...
Tammy, do you have another pen? Thank you.
And you missed one.
I'm surprised.
He's old. No, you didn't.
That's confusing, isn't it?
It is confusing.
Since it was red, I thought, well.
Okay, next item of business is to authorize the chairman to sign a right-of-way application submitted by Custer Power, Public Power District. And Jason, can you...
Yeah, it's simply a resubmit of a previously approved permit that was expired before May completely ended, so it's resubmitted.
Oh, yeah, I recognize the picture again. Are you here with Custer?
Yes, sir.
Could you come forward and state your name, please? Can you tell me what the particulars are here? Remind us again.
Sure.
State your name, please.
Don't need to sign in.
Please, and state your name.
Jason Chaplin, engineering manager with Custer Public Power.
Very great.
Good morning, Jason.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Is this for the work to supply power down to the Gray Bowl Golf Course that's being constructed?
Yes, sir, it is. Yep.
And this is just a bore under the road?
Correct. Yep, yep.
And it's before us today because delay in getting the work completed?
Well, just, we were probably a little bit too ambitious on applying for a bore in February when the weather was still, you know, not quite conducive to doing the bore, and we never got the window of warmer weather. So, yeah, the timeframe expired. We now have all of our contractors and everybody's schedules aligned, so we're ready to get started on the project right away.
Okay, sounds good.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure you're aware, but I know Jason is, that all of our boring slots have been filled in the last probably month. We don't have that road until, is it September?
Yeah. Just quite a few unemployed comedians, and we got one in the room.
We're gonna override that and give you permission anyway.
Thank you.
With that said...
Okay, colleagues, your pleasure.
Check here. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion authorizing you to sign the right-of-way application submitted by Custer Public Power District.
And I do have a check here for the fee. Paid that twice then, eh?
Yeah, I guess we did. Yep.
And a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Further relevant discussion?
I don't know if it's relevant, but I have a question.
Yes.
It's all right. Jason, do you say this is, this is in conjunction with your running your power underground from Highway 83 sub across to the Maxwell Road?
Yes, sir. Yep.
I, this is, to me, Commissioner Hughley pointed out, this is out of our wheelhouse. This is really not our thing, but I did vote no on that because I saw some redundancy there where landowners weren't consulted and you already had a power source on North Maxwell Road. So just so you understand why I voted no on that, I wasn't sure that, you know, that that was necessary to have our landowners subjected to that when they weren't willing to just go along with that. Maybe that's changed?
I, it has definitely changed for landowners, yeah, for sure. And if we happened to not, you know, communicate and convey with them, that was, that was on us. I guess we weren't really under the impression that that might have been the stance of some of the landowners out there because we definitely had been communicating with everybody that we thought we had needed to at the time, so, yeah.
Well, we had two or three of them that were here that weren't on board, so to speak. Anyway, I appreciate you coming down.
Yeah, no problem. And I guess just to clarify, the power source that was available on, at the golf course site, we do have an existing single-phase line that runs across the property. It is near Maxwell Road. But for what the golf course is needing for service from us is a three-phase line.
Understood, understand that.
Yeah.
But I think the point was that if you upgraded to single phase, it'd serve more clients there already having it right-of-way established that you wouldn't have to come back and redo versus a new three-phase. And I think that was the point they were trying to make.
Sure.
Just so you understand.
Okay, yep, understood.
Have you had some conversations with some of the property owners that were here that day?
I don't know if I know exactly who was here that day.
I can provide you two names, Don Licking and Lynn Meyer.
And Paul Orr.
Paul Orr.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Just so you know.
Yep, yep.
We just, we, I shouldn't say we, I felt, yep, it wasn't good communication with Custer on that. And I could see the legitimacy of saying, oh, wait a minute, if you already have a right-of-way established, why not upgrade that to three-phase? That was, I think, their impetus, and I hate to, I don't want to speak for them, but...
Sure.
So anyway, thanks again for coming down.
Yep, yep, absolutely.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Luler?
Aye.
Brunns?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate it.
Thanks for helping bring power to that project. It's gonna be wonderful for that community.
It is a pretty exciting project, I would say.
Yes, it is.
Yes, for sure.
Get to do it every day, so, yep. Glad to see it come together.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on our agenda is Resolution 2023-09 to amend the clerk of district court petty cash fund balance. And this is you?
No, this is me.
Okay.
These two are mine.
I'm trying to decide whether it was you or Tyler.
Me. This is just kind of a housekeeping thing. Back when they did the audit, myself and the clerk of the district court, we'd had petty cash funds for years, way before Deb and I even came into office. And this was just a way to go ahead and establish those. So they had a resolution and they were compliant with the auditor's office. Deb had told me $200, but inadvertently she forgot about another $20 she had in a change drawer. So this is just, this is just raising that from 200 to the 220 that she should have had in there initially. And that's what she's had. So this is just a correction.
Okay, good. Hey, colleagues, what is your pleasure?
Chairman, I make a motion that we pass Resolution 2023-09 to amend the amount in the petty cash fund balance and the clerk of the district court petty cash fund from $200 to $220.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hughley?
Aye.
Brunns?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Luler?
Aye. Woodruff?
Aye.
Okay, next item is Resolution 2023-10 to include additional fees collected for various county services. Again, Becky, could you expound upon this for us?
Yes. We have, we already have a resolution in place that lists most of our county fees since we adopted that prior resolution. The Register of Deeds and then the veteran service officer came to me and asked about selling some of their grave markers that they had on hand that the other counties were wanting. So I updated this resolution, added those fees, so they will be compliant for the auditor.
We're adding the fees that tongue-in...
Yes, they wanna, they wanna, there's a metal shortage and the other counties are wanting those markers and we have surplus, so.
Sounds great. Colleagues?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we pass Resolution 2023-10 to include additional fees collected for various county services. Period.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Hughley?
Aye.
Luler?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Brunns?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Okay, it is 9:17. We will recess as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and convene as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization, again abiding by the Open Meeting Act as amended. First order of business is to approve the minutes regarding Lincoln County Board of Equalization meeting held on May 1st, 2023.
Chairman, I would move to approve the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held May 1st.
Yo. I need you right now.
Yeah, what are you gonna do, yeah? I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hughley?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Luler?
Upstain.
Brunns?
Upstain.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Next item is certificates of correction and refund as submitted by the county assessor. Julie Stinger tells us none, so thank you. Next item is motor vehicle tax exemption applications as submitted by the county treasurer. Good morning.
Good morning, Alex.
And I see that we have a few here. Would you kindly tell us who you are, please?
Alex Gerchula, Lincoln County Chairman.
Great.
Good morning, Alex.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Like we have three. You two get to pick over that one.
Okay.
Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the application for exemption for the salvation of Dory North Platte for a 2016 Ford Transit 350 due to transportation of various programs on meetings and recommended approval by our county treasurer.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hughley?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Luler?
Aye.
Brunns?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the application for exemption by First Baptist Church, Maxwell, Nebraska, for a Ford 2000 Econo van to transport kids to camps and events and the adults to retreats. It has been approved by county treasurer Alex Gerchula.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Luler?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye.
Brunns?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Chairman, on behalf of Bethel Evangelical Reed Church here in North Platte, regarding our United 2016 cargo trailer, your application for exemption of this item, I would move to approve. The cargo trailer is noted to be used to transfer equipment to church-related events. It has been reviewed and approved by our county treasurer, Alex Gerchula. That is my motion.
Sure.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Williams?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye.
Luler?
Aye.
Brunns?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Thank you, Alex.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any other business to come before the Lincoln County Board of Equalization? So by hearing none, we will adjourn at 9:21 as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization reconvenes as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners.
So what is that golf course that they're going to power for?
What's that, George?
The golf course that Custer wants to take power to.
It's the Gray Bowl Golf Course that's being constructed north of Maxwell, on North Maxwell Road.
Gray Bowl?
Gray Bowl.
I wonder where it has it. Commissioner Williams has an invitation as well.
I didn't give one.
They have a website that has really good information that I've seen on it. And I believe The Telegraph has published some articles.
It's part of the... It's part of the, part of the Dormie Golf Group, George.
Pardon me?
Dormie, D-O-R-M-I-E. That's the name of the... Dormi, D-O-R-M-I-E, that's the name of the golf group. There's like half a dozen courses that they own and manage, including Arbor Links in Nebraska City, I believe.
Or North Carolina?
I don't know. Zach Pete isn't Lincoln. Yeah, I couldn't tell you, I don't know.
Jason, I'm going to guess a little bit of moisture probably helped out on road maintenance.
Yes.
Did you have any heavy rains and washouts anywhere in particular?
No, we did have a few spots that were holes in water, actually, because of some, it's pollen and worms we've had on there, but we're working on getting that stuff cleaned up. Now, it'll help us out tremendously everywhere.
I got a picture of one of such instances. I assume you had that same picture on your phone?
Probably, yep. We've got quite a few of them, actually. Yep.
But the moisture was appreciated.
Yes.
For a lot of reasons.
We're hoping it's a trend that continues.
Looks like we have pretty good chances.
Yes, it does.
I had an idea if we sent the two commissioners on a bus trip, we could rile the rain gods somehow, some way, and we did. Or did you bring it back?
I don't think they had had a lot of moisture there either. And we witnessed that the wind can blow in Iowa as well as Nebraska.
It blew, yeah, it blew. Michaela about flew away.
Yeah, I, there's more to me than there used to be. I had my feet firmly on the ground. The people in Iowa did blame it on people from Nebraska coming and bringing the wind with us, though.
I'm going to talk to you about it. Have been close to the flooding there.
Oh, we witnessed Mississippi out of its banks. One of the facilities that we went to, I believe, the second night we were there, we had to take, it was a long detour to get there because it had let out the banks. It actually was even more outside the banks our second day there. And then they said it was going to start receding. But there was a lot of property underwater, a lot of buildings underwater. But they were dry. They had not had any rain either.
You still get the email from building, finger out, fix the tickets. Yeah, I guess.
What's that?
Was what, drains and toilets?
Yeah, those were the jail, a shirt.
Shirt or newspaper or something?
Yeah, it was a T-shirt that they dug out of there the last time.
By Webbookers, not answering. Jason, now that you have some rain, you can shape a few roads.
Yep.
A little hard to work with that powder.
Yeah, it's going to be tough.
Knock down those washboards.
Yeah. I've tried, yeah, I've seen washboards through that. It's going to help it out a lot. Keep coming.
Might be time to put the rooms away for a week. Get the craters out.
It is 9:30. Our next agenda item is discuss and consider courthouse generator project items. Would this be, Kent, did you have some information in this regard?
Well, I was trying to get old Booker, ask him to do a little more inquiring as to if, in fact, the board would tentatively set that Labor Day weekend as our project date, even though we don't know if the equipment hall is going to be here yet, to get some idea if they were comfortable with only being closed half the day on Friday. And I think he's busy with the project over across the street this morning. So, I'll throw him under the bus because I was leaning on him a little bit to get some feedback from those vendors and other participants, the city, municipal light and so forth. On the generator, as we've discussed earlier, that generator, due to the fact that that switchgear is one of the key components we're waiting on, and the fact, also the fact that it has to be installed in fairly close proximity to the transformer and the building, those reasons, we can't apparently do this in stages. So, we'll have to just kill the power across the street north of jail for the duration of the install and the reestablishment of that transformer platform that they want to modify. And as when I say modify, I think they wanted to put it closer to grade. I'm paraphrasing what Muni said that day at the discussion, in the discussion. But at any rate, I asked Becky to put it on her just for the fact that we're asking the board's input, are we comfortable, and I don't, Tyler talked to the courts and potentially, if we did pencil that in to be closed from, say, noon on that Friday, Tyler chime in if I'm conveying the wrong information. But he was under the impression the courts would wrap things up on the court that day. So, that portion of the accommodation, as far as the function of the courthouse, would be minimized. It still begs the question, was the board, just insist that we ask all vendors and all participants to do it Friday afternoon through Monday, which is, obviously, we're closing Monday. So, I'm seeking some input as to whether you want to, do we tentatively say, heads up, we're going to do this starting noon on Friday? Because actually, some of the players involved, and I won't say which ones because I don't remember quite honestly, but we're kind of leaning towards letting us have, give them the entire day of Friday. And I hate to encumber the public with limitation to access because it is pretty close to the end of the month. They're trying to get business done with property taxes.
If I recall the conversation in that meeting, they even explored maybe closing 3:00 on Thursday.
Thursday, exactly.
And I think that is not necessary. I think if we give them, I tend to agree, from noon on Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, I feel like that should be, I mean, this won't be the first generator that they've installed. They do a lot of these.
I guess my reason to ask Becky to put it on was to see where the board falls on this. If there's some common ground that we think the least amount of intrusion on the work week for the access for the public is, I think we all have the same opinion. We don't want to inconvenience the public any more than we have to.
I agree.
And the days are what again?
Well, it would be the weekend of Labor Day.
September.
September 1 would be the Friday in question. September 4th is the Monday holiday. So, in theory, Joe, they would have whatever we would give them on Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday.
So, to me, I think it makes a lot of sense to schedule that because it takes a lot of nuisance. I think that's great to schedule it. Last minute, if we say, no, you're working, you're working. You know, if the thing fell through, that's the way it is, we'll go with plan B. The equipment's not here, obviously, not going to do it.
Right.
I think it's, I think it's good to be proactive itself.
My question would be, what if, because of holiday weekend, they can't get a particular item that they need?
That was the primary concern.
Do we want to have a contingency plan for Tuesday, September 5?
Or, well, that's a good point. That was the number one concern of some of the participants in this, both, I think, municipal light and water and our private contractor, was what if we run into an issue where we need a part and we'll have to try to pull somebody in on a holiday weekend to access it? Now, having had time to think about that, I guess, and to Joe's point, they've done these before, it's not the first rodeo. So, you've got to know what supply houses you'd have to reach. And you'd have plenty of time to say, hey, I would like Bill Smith to be available because this is crucial. Can he come down and get what I need? Because if it's not in town, it's not going to happen anyway. It wouldn't matter if it was a holiday or weekend or whatever. So, to Joe's point, if we set it tentatively, and again, that's why I asked to have it discussed here, to see where everyone else is at. Because I'm leaning towards saying to everyone, look, we're challenged to minimize the impact of the public. So, we're going to tentatively pencil this in. We're going to close Friday at noon on the Labor Day weekend. Plan accordingly and scream bloody murder in the next 65 days, 70 days, if it's not going to work, because it's not written in stone.
Did the contractor give you reasonable assurance that that would be enough time if they had half a day Friday?
I think it was a fairly comfortable tone in the room. You were there, Michaela.
I agree.
I mean, they're trying to be cautious, but they're cautiously optimistic that that timeline, assuming everything goes well and all the components are there, that they can complete it before Monday evening.
I think the supply chain issue just has everybody on edge. And I don't know if we can plan for everything. But I feel like we could go back to them and say, you know, we felt comfortable with the Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and see if they are in agreement with that.
With that Friday being September 1, so August begins the business that needed to be done at the courthouse could be completed on that Thursday. Tyler, question for you is, is would the courts upstairs be amenable to all day Friday, just to give us that extra cushion? Or is it even possible?
County court needs to be able to get people who were arrested Thursday to run through as needed. There's some exceptions for the holiday. That's one thing you've got to close on a Friday. Nobody was going to get arraigned until Tuesday anyway. But if it'd be closed Friday and then not get anybody arraigned until Tuesday, they got picked up on Wednesday, that starts to be a problem.
True.
The other half of the issue is if the court's going to be closed on that Friday, our office and the court have to let law enforcement know that so they don't put that date down on people's tickets to show up. Because Friday is the speeding ticket, marijuana ticket day. And so, we have to let law enforcement know sufficiently in advance so that they don't have 30 or 40 tickets hanging out there. They have a court date on it, it's not going to take.
So, would that be what Russ calls a get out of jail free card or?
That'd be, makes our life a whole lot more complicated next door, Carter.
So, I guess the answer to that question is we probably better plan on half a day Friday and hope that's good enough.
Well, because there's a number of entities involved, both public and private, I'm leaning towards if the board's comfortable with it, saying, declaring that we're going to recognize. Becky, do you have something to say?
Yes, that is the second half of property taxes are due on September 1st. So, just telling, just saying.
Well, and I refer to the end of the month, so taxes, so, yeah, I understand that.
So, does it make more sense to leave Friday in place and operate flexible on that Tuesday, the 5th?
It's not my office, so I don't know, but now she's called off to be in that term.
Any chance of a reprieve from that office? Is that legally possible?
That's statute. That's why I referred to taxes there at the end of the month, you know, if I knew the last half was due.
Giving up Tuesday might be a better day than Friday. Then we'd have to meet on Wednesday.
Then the only issue with that is, again, with the courts, you're not really able to schedule a half day in.
Typically, we meet weekly, but there's a next door that says, yep, we meet every month. Even once a week, so, you know, we do that once a year anyway, usually towards the end of the year. So, just running that out there.
You do have that option, so, you five have the most flexibility of anyone, as long as payroll isn't due in which case you're going to meet. Yeah, I'm less concerned about our meeting and more just making sure that if somebody gets picked up, they have the opportunity to get in front of a judge, particularly if they're innocent, so. But if we schedule that Tuesday to be closed, that's, you basically have to do a full day being closed on that Tuesday. But.
Well, the property tax thing was.
Property tax thing is going to be big.
Yeah.
A thought, like I said, it don't affect me, but.
It's a big day for that office.
And we, you know, we don't want to create an encumbrance on taxpayers that doesn't give them.
What is, okay, so, let's look down the calendar a little bit further. What time in the next month or two could we schedule this work? What time in the next month or two could reschedule this work?
The next opportunity would probably be Thanksgiving week.
Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Is the courthouse open on the Friday after Thanksgiving?
No.
Probably inquire with our board assistants, see if you wanna fix turkey tacos. Is that Friday? No, is that a no?
You don't have anything nice to say, you just don't say it.
I guess because we are discussing this early and this is why we're doing this. Perhaps as, as a board, we say, we recognize the encumbrance on the taxpayer because of the first of the month and property taxes being due, we're challenging all the players to be ready to do it in that three-day window. And just simply leave it that way.
You have Veterans Day, which that's a Friday, the tenth this year.
Oh, okay.
And that, well.
Of November.
Can't really tear that apart and then say, well, we'll wait. Once you tear it apart, you're gonna have to put the switchgear in place, tie the transformer back in.
Be more inclined, because we don't know if the generator, all the elements of the generator is gonna be in in time, pushing it to that Veterans Day weekend, doing a half day on the ninth. That gives them three and a half days.
Same amount of time.
Same amount of time. Then you're not running into conflicts with, you can still take care of the courts in the morning on the, on the ninth and you're not running into conflicts with, conflicts with taxing.
Also, there's not a lot, not all of the businesses are closed on Veterans Day like they tend to be for Memorial Day or Thanksgiving, so that might be.
Weather could be a factor if you push it back.
Yeah.
I mean, and they're outside, it's all. I would, I would, as we discussed, I'd be leaning towards declaring that we're going to just challenge them to do it in a three-day window. We can, we can change it, but say, look, we don't see a practical way around this because it's tax day. So here's your deal, as this approaches, if we get the switchgear, if we get all the components and we all do a full court press, because they're, I mean, it's not like they're not prepping for this. They are. They understand they're gonna be here on the weekend, they, they get that already. To their credit, they've acknowledged that.
Okay, so. Well, the answer, having now spoken to the assessor about this, taxes become delinquent on the first. So that's the day the interest starts. It's not if you don't get them paid by the first. You don't get them paid by the end of August, you start paying interest. So you're not shorting people a half day on the last day. You're shorting people a half day on the first day of interest, so. If that factors in.
I'd be inclined to do the half day on that, on the first.
Okay, that's, that's a good plan. And if we have to go with plan B, we'll jump back into November. But let's, let's, I think you got a good, good idea. Let's, let's go with this for the Labor Day weekend, half a day Friday, we close at noon on Friday, first of September.
I'm still inclined to, since we have time, that's why I ask it to be discussed now. Still inclined just to say that we're gonna just take advantage of the three-day weekend. And vendors tell us in June, July, why this will work. Because I think there's some, there's always concern, but I think it's healthy amount of optimism that all the people there, they can do it on that window. So maybe at this early stage, maybe rather than declare we're gonna do it, let's simply, I'm suggesting we work off the premise that we're not gonna close early on Friday and say, okay, everyone involved, this is what we'd like to do. By not allowing you that half day, are we, are we tying your hands to get everything completed in three working days?
Okay, Tyler, what, how much notice would the second, third floor of the original building need to have to know that we were going to close at noon on September one?
Third, less than second. Second needs to know sooner so that we can get it out to law enforcement. Don't put down the first as a date we're gonna have court. Otherwise, again, we're gonna have eighty tickets hanging out there that have September first as a court date on them when the court's not gonna be open.
Ideally, a forty-five day notice.
At least. Probably more like sixty.
But if you're concerned just closing at noon on Friday, the person's not at all, is that what you're?
I'm waiting for it to not close at all.
Right.
But to Tyler's point, if we have to change gears.
Close the whole thing.
Close, when close at noon, then we've encumbered the courts.
Yeah.
And they've got a pocket that they can process.
Okay, you and the, the contractor that's doing it, you mean, those are the two main players?
Main players, right.
Yes.
Okay, you know, I guess I would respectfully ask, is it possible for you to go back and have another meeting? We talked to the board, this is the way it is. And if you're feeling that it is nothing, don't have to on Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, say, because now we've got nothing that's open that they need it. So you have to light up Smitty from here and Bill from there, get him called.
Well, that's, that's precisely my point.
So, so if you do that.
The board's.
Then you can come back with definitively, they just, they just don't think that's possible. In a week or two, then we don't have to worry about forty-five days or fifty days. We'll just make a deal and do it. And I'd rather err on the side of caution, which is a half day. But maybe if you could just do that and get it done early, you know, in the next couple of weeks. Just be done, does that make sense?
Well, it does, and I think that's kinda what I was saying, but let's just declare that's what we think we wanna do and then challenge them to tell us no. But to Tyler's point about the timeline, to use your phrase, proceed on the side of caution. If you declare the intent to close at noon early on, then the courts can act accordingly, the sheriff's department. And then if that changes, we really haven't harmed anyone.
Well, so that gives us thirty days to get this figured out with the contractors on whether or not they need that additional half day, approximately, more or less. And then that gives us time to get it back on the agenda, discuss it and give proper notice to the law enforcement and everything else regarding the ticket. So I don't think it's too early to be having this conversation. I appreciate you bringing it forward.
No, it's here because the vendors didn't say we have to have it, they said it would be nice to have.
But I thought when we first started talking about it, I thought they wanted the whole day Friday.
They did.
Not the half day. And then we came back and said, well, no, we're probably a bit difficult, we can do it on a half day. Now we're going back and saying, well, now not the whole day or the half day, no day. So is that kinda the way to remember it?
Yeah.
They were asking for it, they didn't necessarily think they needed it, is my impression.
I think they were erring on the side of caution, trying, no, realizing, they realized that our courts need, you know, ample notice. And so initially, they asked for that, three o'clock on Thursday. And I think we kinda said we didn't wanna go that far right in that meeting.
If the courts, you know, if the courts weren't an issue, we could simply wait and see all the pieces come into place, but.
So they, then they were, they were looking three o'clock Thursday, then they were probably planning six hours of work Thursday, all day Friday. And so now we're cutting out a lot of, a lot of hours of work and compressing that during the time. I'm not sure I feel comfortable with that.
Well, unless they were just wanting to eliminate some overtime weekend pay for their employees on the holiday weekend.
I really don't think that was part of their thought process, was not my, I, I think they are used to doing big projects like this on the weekend, you know, at hospitals and clinics and, so I don't really think that was part of the process. I think they just wanted to not have business on Tuesday roll around.
Sure.
And them not be done.
Yeah.
So they, they had some anxiety over what if we need parts and we don't have them available and we have to reach out to other vendors and try to set all that up.
Yeah, yeah, that was, that was a point, that was a point made.
Okay, so have we come to any kind of a plan A and B yet? I guess we've come up with the plans, we haven't prioritized them.
Well, perhaps informally, just, I'm hearing the board's comfortable with noon. Is that right or wrong?
I would be.
I would be.
So I guess Michaela and I can approach the key players, the outside vendor, municipal light, IT and so forth, and see if there's still a comfort zone with noon and next Monday. If they're all freaking out, then we'll have to talk about it again. Otherwise, we could probably proceed with the noon so Tyler could notify all the appropriate people, law enforcement and courts, heads up.
And you know, no disrespect, I think that probably, tell me if I'm wrong, that would come better from a, from a letter from this board, from the chairman, directly to the courts and staffs and taking it out, the official piece of papers, they'd be, this, the courthouse is closed, the board did it these days and that's what's happening.
Yeah, good point.
I think that's a great suggestion.
He's got big shoulders over there. He's got big shoulders, isn't he?
Like Michaela and I can, we can follow up with those key vendors and, well, all the folks again and look that one and see if there, if that panics them to be shortened up with that.
You'll be able to tell if they got the deer in the headlights.
Yeah, we will.
I mean, should we have a contingency plan for Tuesday in place just in case anyway? Or am I overthinking that?
I don't think it's out of line to be thinking about it. Cause Murphy might show up for this job project.
I would say stage one, step one is to gain that comfort level or gain, ascertain that comfort level.
From Friday at noon.
And see where we're at, if we think we're, we need to do a Tuesday contingent.
Okay. I think that's a good plan.
So we'll try to talk to those folks this week. We're both in town for other meetings this afternoon, maybe we can corral some folks.
I'm hoping a representative from one of those outside entities will be at our meeting this afternoon, but I don't know if it's the key player.
Well, he's, he's one of the key components, so.
Yeah, I don't know if he'll, I don't know if he'll send somebody else from his.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Okay, well, thank you all for the input. So you have your direction.
All right, we'll look, try to further define their comfort level.
Okay.
Noon on Sat, on Friday and that gives, gives us time to notify the courts.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Tyler, any need for a closed session?
No.
Thank you. Okay, next item, hear concerns from elected officials, department heads or their representative. Jason, new employee online?
Yeah, I have a couple things I guess.
Good.
Um, yeah, we do have a new office manager started last week, Deanna. She's been doing a wonderful job for us already.
And just in case we didn't hear your first name and your name.
Deanna, oh, Jason Schultz, Lincoln County Highway Superintendent. And also the O'Fallon project we're working on. Um, we did get that completed. Um, all the underground work, roadway is open under gravel right now. Um, we are in the process of getting some prices on the asphalt portion of it to finish that up. So hopefully be coming to you guys next week with, with that so we can get some pricing approved for asphalt.
Are all the stakeholders appeased and happy?
Everyone is happy, yes. Is there?
There is water in the ditch. I got a drone picture of it.
Good, fantastic.
Not so much the cost, that's really a moot point, getting asphalt, are you getting to get asphalt now?
Yeah, yep.
That's a good, good point, thank you.
Good news.
And you will, you'll be looking on some bids for, have we set a time to?
Uh, we haven't yet. I'm still been working with the engineer on some of our investigative work there before we decide exactly what we're gonna bid there, but we should be, uh, that should be coming up here pretty soon too. So we can set a bid date for asphalt overlay project, so.
And your Southernland Bridge, waiting to get that paperwork back from?
That one is with the state right now. So we're just waiting to hear back from the state, which I probably need to try to do a follow-up on that as well to see where we're at in that process.
State D O T or two?
Yes, yeah.
And what are they trying to apply?
They are the ones that give the final approval for it going to bid. So before we can go to the final, um, on the engineering and, and all that, we're just waiting to get their approval that everything's cleared and we can start the process.
We get that approval back, how long do you think it'll take for us to put out an RFP?
Um, you know, that I don't know. I can find out, I'll talk to the, the engineer.
We might as well.
On that, because it might take them a little while, cause I think they're only ninety percent right now. And then plus there's some things we need to incorporate into the project too that came out of the, um, the environmental review and the historical review, so.
You're answering my question, cause I was curious how far along we were in that, in that planning and if there was something that we could be doing while we're waiting for that signature, but ninety percent is good.
So Nebraska DOT is who has this?
Yes, yep.
So you're gonna rattle our cage?
Yep.
In a pleasing, positive vein?
Yes, sir, yes, of course.
Sounds great, sounds great. Yeah, we're, we're right up to the doorstep there, Joe, and it'd be nice if we could just kinda make it over to that sale. Yeah, check on that, keep us posted.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Yep, thanks, Jason.
Keep this meeting open for the next little bit when we work through claims.
Twice in one day.
I would like to address this invoice that we have here for maintenance on some equipment at our jail, that this should be greatly reduced moving forward on the labor that we're paying for this type of work. Because Booker did a great job on seeking out an employee to join our building and grounds team that has the skills and the experience to do this work internally.
Hmm, yeah.
And if you, and if you look at it, it's all labor. And that, our new young man will.
Had that discussion with him last Monday, after an hour Tuesday, maybe, no, it was Monday. Had that very conversation with Booker. Cause we questioned some of the expense of overhauling some of those hiders. He said, that, that type of expense is gonna go away as we do it in-house, so good to hear that.
Yes, I think that was a good hire and.
George, Erv, yeah. Question.
Who was, who was doing the work on the generator?
I'm sorry?
The generator work, who was doing that?
We didn't state the general contractor, did we?
No, we, we were just talking about all the players. We've got, and we've got private contractor involved, at least one. Uh, the municipal light and water be involved, cause they have to disconnect power and assist us in replacing the transformer.
R I T people.
R I T people, there's a number of players involved, George.
Our building and grounds team is heavily involved also.
Yeah, we're just, it's simply.
There's lots of moving parts to that project.
So where is the generator? Generator, where is it located?
It's going to be located on the north side of the building.
So this is a new generator?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes, this does not exist. There are, there is no.
There is no generator.
Alternative power source for the courthouse in.
Well, there's not any now.
No.
We used some of our CARES Act funding about a year ago to get this ball rolling back when we were at risk of, of power being cut off.
Which did.
Cold months and hot months and for continuity of government and.
Because we're in the southwest. Because we're in the Southwest power complex, and they have to share their power. So it's become a concern with the brownouts here, what, two years ago, that, since those funds became available, that perhaps we should be a little proactive and establish the ability to function.
We'll have power cut off during our hundred year celebration.
So, um, basically, George, we're just the consortium of both private and public, uh, vendors involved, we're just gonna try to get a consensus on the timeline they need to put all the pieces together.
Interrupting public access to the building, minimize, minimize that.
Station. Local ground, municipal light water, local.
Local contractors.
Contractors.
Correct.
Okay.
IT is involved because of the technical part of it.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, George.
Tammy, are you involved in that?
No.
You're not even fixing one? Oh, God, I gotta stop that.
I obviously missed, missed the backstory here.
Oh, my gosh, count your blessings.
Okay. Somebody will fill me in later.
Yeah.
Yes. I'd also like to point out that we have our first pay up on the remodel that we have going on the new property that we acquired. And, um, I have been over and done walkthroughs with Kent, and we, the, the work has progressed as described in this invoice.
Also, thanks to Joe, by the, took time to give me a tour and give me some tremendous, really important background information on the HVAC system, I greatly appreciate. Pointed out all the intricacies of that system and the zones and so forth that.
I have to thank Kent for telling me where each one of the units serve.
Oh, nice, good to know.
Which I swear to God I did. And he said, well, this or this or this, that's it.
It was written on the front panel in small print.
He asked me whether it's served, I said, I don't know difference, so.
Well, now you know, you learned, you learned something, too.
It was very enlightening, and I appreciated it because, um, it puts a lot of that in perspective on how, you know, we might, might wanna, so. I asked Joe to participate to reach out to, how do we do? It's done? What?
We have an agreement, it's done.
It's already done, okay.
It's gonna be done, the agreement is made.
Okay. Got it done already? Shee, kudos. Okay.
I guess I'm out, I'm out of the loop, I don't know.
It's okay.
You'll fill us in.
Another one of them.
Well, what, to carry on that theme.
Yeah.
This is the one invoice that you asked me about at the beginning of the meeting. Uh, Booker sent me that text message explanation, but if you will look, one of the reasons those machines are now labeled is this. When the, when the heat went out on third, um, third floor, second floor, this winter. A lot of time was involved in trying to trace where the problem was at, and so they did take the time, here's the detail. It took four days to troubleshoot it, track it down, figure out what they needed. And so building and grounds requested while we were doing all that, that everything be labeled. And, um, shut offs be put closer to that, the individual units. So we will not have that expense moving forward, so.
Definitely we were trying to approach and let, and these are good.
And I, yeah, I don't know.
That'd be a huge hit.
Here comes Booker, the man, we were just talking about.
Hey, how's the, how's the toilet drain plugging, unplugging project?
Get your snake out?
Yeah.
That's everything that they went through to get us back up there running, so. It'll be, it'll be easier.
They can walk, they can work, that's how I see it, Joe, if they walk, they can work, man.
So what'd you have, uh?
I'm sorry.
How many drains did you have plugged this morning?
A lot, shower, toilet.
Okay, so you missed all the discussion about our tentative closing for the generator project.
Okay.
Remember, we were gonna reach out to various people and see how comfortable they were with the half-day Friday?
Yes, sir.
Were we successful?
No.
No, they were not happy or?
No, I couldn't get ahold of them.
Oh, okay, we're gonna.
And I was there Friday, too, in his office.
We're gonna work on that.
Okay, no, he didn't say no, he just.
Yeah.
I couldn't get ahold of Kyle, and I stopped by Friday at Hall.
Don't recently threw you into the bus, cause you weren't here.
Well, that's all right.
But you're here now, so.
I'm, I'm hoping somebody from that group will be at our meeting this afternoon.
We're just, we're gonna see, uh, so you know. Feel free to discuss this with any and all parties that are involved you run into, but we're gonna see if we can solidify that, you know, that noon on Friday thing. Because it's, it's, it's the least intrusion into the access for the public. And the courts can act accordingly if we give them plenty of notice.
I am so sorry. Thank you for bringing that, I just, that was the very last invoice that came across, and we saw all the detail, thank you.
Okay.
That's awesome that they put that much detail on there.
Some of it's, I didn't know how to explain on text messages, it's so long.
And I remember having conversation with Jeff while all that was going on, and I knew how involved it was, and I had simply forgotten.
But there's an extra unit, too, that we got the storage to deal with that.
End of month, beginning of month, being booked, not the one for my office.
Took them seven weeks to get one, I didn't have.
Okay.
That's part of that seventeen thousand.
Okay.
That's what we're talking about now.
Thank you, appreciate it. You're coming to our meeting this afternoon, one thirty, good deal, see you there.
And I'll try to get ahold of Kyle, too.
Yeah, well, lean towards the, just the three days.
Thanks. Um, end of month, beginning of month, my office registrations, not good. It's boat season for Labor Day, not good. Um, real estate starts showing interest, so that last week of August and beginning of, beginning of September, it cannot be closed half-day. My office can't for motors and real estate.
Hmm, can't be closed.
Good to know.
Because we're a lot of angry people.
The month or the first of the month.
Motor already thought we were closed for Arbor Day, so they didn't come in on Friday, so they came in on Monday. So you could pick a day that's not end or beginning of month, or a Friday, Monday.
Can you pick another day that we have a three-day weekend on already that we can work with?
How about Veterans Day?
Friday, though.
Like the tenth?
Fridays and Mondays are busy for motors.
So we're closed on Friday already.
Well, but it's, it'd be middle of the month.
It'd be middle of the month.
Right, but so motors, Fridays and Mondays, cause people wanna get stuff done before the weekend, or they forget on the weekend, so they come in on Monday.
Well, but so here, here's our point, is.
Well, yeah, I know, I'm just saying, like, that's for.
There's not gonna be a date that works perfectly for everybody.
Middle of the month is better than end of weekend.
That's, that's the question.
So Veterans Day would work better than?
That would be much better.
Labor Day.
Yes, because that's, cause you're getting to real estate for the second half, not the end of August.
Understandable.
So, let me know if you can pick something else, Veterans Day would probably be a lot better for.
Kent and I are gonna go back and have a conversation.
Project outside in November, though, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
It will be an outdoor for the workers, and so pushing it into November is a concern, but I don't think we have any other.
The middle of September would be better, but I know there's no.
No three-day weekends.
Holiday either.
Unless we make one, but then we give up a Friday or a Monday.
And there's nothing we can do in October either. Anyway, let me know what you think, and I'll tell you what we got.
Okay, thank you for your input.
Thank you. So Kent.
That's why you notified me on.
We have enough public notice.
Yeah.
There's not gonna be a perfect time.
No, and there's gonna be people that don't see the, you know, all of the communications, no matter how many we do.
Which is why I appreciate you bringing this up for conversation this early, Kent.
Absolutely.
They didn't know that it was open on October.
So the estimated, um, delivery time on the last component was like?
August.
August.
Give or take, and that's, that's, that's a wide open, it actually was at the end of June, early, or, end of July.
That's what I thought, end of July.
End of July, first of.
So that gives us some cushion there, Fourth of July'd be too soon.
That's not gonna work. Pretty confident all the pieces and parts wouldn't be here yet.
Okay.
What about the weather?
The weather.
Yeah, the farther we push it out, the bigger the obstacle that becomes.
That is not a good plan, if you get a snowstorm, you're out there asking people to work out in the twenty-degree weather.
I agree.
Dealing with power, if you don't have to, why do it?
The plus side is, even if we do, do, the weekend we're in.
Thank you, Joe.
I hear Alex's concern about it being beginning of the month, but it's not, it was already clarified that that's not the last day for getting your property taxes paid, it's just the first day for interest being accrued.
Okay, this takes care of that old.
Cam. Rest of the news is the five hundred and fifty pounds. But we're not incumbent.
Based on conversation Joe and I had last Monday to approach them about that. And Joe said, I can talk to those folks.
Best case scenario, in my opinion, best case scenario, in my opinion.
Well, thank you for leading that conversation.
Is there a fee involved, or just, just working together, perfect, I like the way you're thinking.
That could get taller than. Chris?
Hmm?
You were gone for a long, I forgot your first name, so.
We won't have the last component for the generator in by then. End of July, early August.
Oh, she must've said Fourth of July.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alex, I think.
That was Alex, she was wondering what July third would look like.
God bless her, it's nice for her to.
Continue to look at her schedule.
Chris, would you like to give an informal update about our trip to Iowa?
Leave the casino part, I'll let you do that.
No, I'd like to do that, that's why I asked, you're it.
Um, no, I think it was a, it was a good trip, I really appreciate Murphy Tractor paying for all the expenses, uh, for both Michaela and I, and Tanner, one of our foremen, and one of our maintenance guys to go out there. Take a tour of facilities, their training facilities, um, their plant, that, talk about a well-oiled machine. And it, I had a couple conversations, they're nearing capacity with that, and they're growing their market shell, market share of business tremendously.
And what does this plant produce?
This plant in particular produces graders, um, goodness, loaders.
Loaders, it's the only plant in the United States that does the big dump trucks.
Yes.
So.
So they do several things.
Oh, yeah, they do a lot of things, so the, uh, motor graders, um.
Excavators?
Thirty, thirty-eight football fields inside.
Well, I don't, I didn't see any excavators, but, um, the big loaders.
The one at Tips, the one that Chris was running, and you saw the Outunder site.
I don't think, I didn't see any of those there.
That absolutely did not have.
But the big dump truck that Chris loaded and got to drive and, and dump.
He didn't back off a cliff, did he?
I was really impressed, um, the way that Mark, the, the way the technology is going, and the industry is going, I think there's going to be room in the future with purchases that we make. Um, to really realize some savings when it comes to fuel, capturing data, um, it's exciting to, to see the advances the entire industry is making in there.
In the, in the new equipment that they are.
In the new equipment that they are, they are making.
Yeah.
Having discussions about leases?
I've had a couple of discussions.
Are you leading this brief or am I?
No, I am on that, because I am the one that started those discussions, so I did have, and so did Chris, several conversations with both John and Jolene.
They are actually, they're going to be sending out, um, some of their executives to our local area to have more in-depth conversations and really drill into the numbers to find out if going to more of a lease-type program for our fleet is feasible, it makes sense dollars and cents-wise for the taxpayers. Or if we continue the route that we're, we're on with our rotation.
Especially if that new technology lowers operating expenses, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
So, uh, we're looking at dates that works with, with their team, uh, both their finance and, uh, their equipment, uh, executives for actually coming out here to Lincoln County.
Hmm, great.
Um, they said.
Hey, you wanna add?
Yes, thank you. Didn't realize it was gonna turn into a wrestling match.
Hey, I offered.
Anyway, I did appreciate them speaking to the fact that at the local level here, they haven't done a lot of leasing in recent years. And we felt for, for our team that it would be imperative to have Jason be part of that conversation. So I really appreciated Jolene and John and their bosses suggesting that they send a team who are experts in that area here, um, to have those conversations with us.
Sounds great.
But it was very eye-opening, actually getting into the equipment. Um, I highly recommend that we get as many of our road, um, road crew leadership out there, as well as you guys, if you have the opportunity to go, I highly recommend it.
For me, that it was great to have conversation with people who knew the equipment from start to finish, there were engineers there, there were mechanics there, there were operators there. And we all know that what a big spend these machines are, but when you see the safety features that have been installed, and the automation that makes the machine efficient. And they, they have data that they have put together that can show us on paper how that investment pays for itself over a period of time. And so it was, it was a trip that was well worth going on, and the fact that Murphy Tractor stepped up and, and paid for everything, there was no expense to the county. I think that speaks to the partnership that they are, have with us already, and would like to grow and continue.
Yeah, I can almost imagine that, uh, Deputy County Attorney wants to be there just on the legal standpoint of running the equipment.
It's unfortunate that one of the people that has to sign those leases wasn't there to talk to them.
It really was, and I, and I can see where that should probably be remedied.
Well, I tried.
I'm not certain when the next opportunity will be, but they will be sure to let us know, I don't think it happens every year.
They were doing an every-year thing, and then COVID kinda, they're figuring it out, but I was told they'd like to get it back to an annual type event, so.
With that being said, Tammy, does the county have official thank you cards, um, Chris and I, I brought a couple. So, Chris, if you wanna stick around and we'll sign that, and I'll get it, one to Bill Buckles, the president of John Deere, was there, I'd like to thank him, and the local Murphy Tractor office.
And just so you're aware, tomorrow afternoon at five P M. And just so you're aware, tomorrow afternoon at 5:00 P.M., Habitat for Humanity is having mayor proclamation and a restore announcement, if anyone's, I'm going to be occupied tomorrow.
Me either, please.
At five, that's the end of the, I think, but if somebody else, you're all aware of this, this has been media.
Yeah. Also, our Buildings and Grounds Department is participating tomorrow in the downtown cleanup that the Downtown Association is conducting, so you'll see Booker and some of his team out participating in that.
Yep. Okay, um. Becky?
The Blue Cross Blue Shield application, I just received it on Friday. There's a very short window this year, because it kind of got stuck at the Department of Insurance, I guess, but I got it Friday, and we have to have it back in by May 18th, so the next, it'll be on the next meeting, because that's the only meeting we'll have beginning now on the deadline.
Okay.
Um, as you, you've seen, the increase was 3.98, so.
Hey. Heather, anything?
No.
Tammy?
No.
Colleagues, do you have anything else we need to kick around?
You're, we've got on the calendar Wednesday, your meeting.
9:00 A.M.
9:00 A.M.
Yep.
Sure I have it.
And where's, that's not in here?
No, it's on the road department. Uh, it's the, uh.
Weed office.
Weed office.
Tammy and Kent, uh, we, or whoever it was, I think it was Kent, and he was alone with a fire, people.
I didn't have any contact after he canceled the meeting, so.
Yeah, that's, I haven't had any feedback. Yeah, for, I don't understand, the sense of urgency seems to.
We're not hard to find.
No.
I think they'd be motivated to get that moving down the road.
I agree. I agree. Um, probably to, and probably to their defense, I don't know that it's everyone, just maybe one, one or two that their schedule wouldn't allow a follow-up meeting, I guess, I don't know. I'm making a lot of assumptions, because I haven't put any detail.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Uh, anything else, colleagues? Going on? What, I, I'll get a little trip, Ken.
Uh, Todd Herndon at Weed's confirms that you guys will be on the objective Wednesday morning, and I will not be attending.
Okay, sounds good.